Don't worry, they'll let us know you're about here. See you, Beth. Bye-bye. Remember, Stringham, please, a couple of minutes.
Okay, it's six o'clock. When we go get started, I know we have one board member maybe a minute or two late. Let's go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome you to our Board Trustees Meeting, a public hearing. The Wasech Front Voice is recycling. My name is Dan Givens. I'm the Chair. I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. We will, let's begin by, we'd like to recognize we have some online participants. We have board members Patrick Schaefer, Tessa Stitzer, and Keith Zuspin online. And our Secretary, Katerina Garcia, is online. And Katerina, are you ready to go ahead and call the roll from a distance?
Sir Chair, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. Why don't you go ahead and call the roll, Katerina?
Okay. And I'd like to also request that if all participants would sign in as well, just before you leave is fine. Okay, we'll get started.
Collect the clipboard so we don't forget. That'd be great. Go ahead, Katerina.
Thank you. Chair Daniel Givens.
Here.
Vice Chair Anna Barbieri.
Here.
Brett Hales.
Here.
Cindy Sharkey.
Here.
Eric Barney.
Here.
Greg Shelton.
Here.
Keith Zuspin.
Here.
Laurie Stringham. Patrick Schaefer.
Here.
Robert Pinon.
Present.
Scott Bracken, excused. Sherry Orne.
Here.
Tessa Stitzer.
Present.
Tom Desirant, excused. Thank you.
And Katerina, Laurie Stringham just walked in, so she's present here in person. So, all right, let's move on to item one on our agenda, the consent items. These are the October 23, 2023 Board meetings. Any corrections, comments about the minutes? All right, if there are none, I'll take a motion to approve.
Tessa Stitzer, Crawford, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Okay.
We have a second by Greg Shelton. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Item number two is meeting open for public comments. Do we have any members of the public here present in the room or online who wish to make public comments? Any takers? Okay, it appears there are no public comments. That's surprising. I know there's no jazz game tonight, and I thought this was being a public meeting. There being no public comments, we'll close the comments section. We'll now move on to item number three, which is the jam in the middle of this meeting, which is the review of the 2024 tentative budget presentation and the tentatively adopted 2024 budget and fee schedule, which is Exhibit A. Let's turn the time over to Pam Roberts, our General Manager and Help Court, our Finance Director, to take us through that.
Right, thank you very much. I'll kick it off and then turn it over to Paul. So this is starting on page 35 for anyone that's following at home. And as we reviewed last month in the October meeting, we went over the tentative budget, and you did tentatively adopt that. So one of the things I wanted to do is just run through some of the introductory information to start off with. We're going to continue with our wonderful services that we provide with the weekly curbside garbage and recycling collection and the seasonal container reservation program, which is very popular, as you all know. Right now, we're planning on 60 containers being delivered every day and rotating through municipalities in the district. Next year, we will start in Mill Creek and rotate around, and of course, we'll get proper notice out to everybody prior to that. We have the seasonal services, and right now, the lead bag program is going on. When we get to my report, I have a picture of one of the sites, but it was early in the season. I should have taken a picture on my way in this morning, because it was a much different scene with a lot more piled up bags. Anyway, our crews work hard to clean that up and have an avenue for residents to get rid of their leads rather than clogging the storm drains and creating flooding. I think it's a great service. We have the Christmas tree collection that will come up in January, and that's curbside. And we ask residents to notify us, which helps us to stay efficient in that way. And then we have the landfill vouchers, which is very popular, and we'll get into the QR code later on in my report as part of the goal that we have for customer service. And then you're very familiar with the trailer rental program. It's a reduced fee that the residents do pay, and the thought is that the residents pay into the district with the service fees. They help to have a reduced charge there. $190 for the bulk and $55 for the green trailer, and that's parked on the resident's property for four days for them to fill up. Now, we have the continued subscription green and curbside glass collections. We also have the central glass collection sites. I don't want to forget those. There's seven of them in the district. So moving into the priorities, we all know that costs have gone up. They continue to go up through the end of this year. We're starting to see maybe and hoping for leveling off in 2024, but we have anticipated increases that fall over with maintenance, fuel going up, and then our tipping fees that the landfill will get into. And then, go ahead, the only fee increase we have going into the 2024 budget, I'll relate to residential fees for the Town of Brighton and Big Cotton Canyon residents. That will go up $2 per month per month, and we'll get into the exact, when we get into the fee increase or the fee schedule. The other thing is we are raising the front load services 10% across the board for front load garbage and 18% across the board for front load recycling services. All right, let's get into the personnel highlights, and I want to thank you for being so open to trying, as you know, we've been catching up with those salary markets. I feel like we're in a good spot, and especially going into 2024, we're asking for a total 6% increase. What that consists of is the 4% colon starting January 1, which, thank you very much, is very generous, and our employees are very thankful. And then there'll be a 2% merit increase that hits on the employee's anniversary date when they successfully pass their annual evaluation. And for employees that are at the top of that range, we're going to continue with the lump sum amounts. For supervisor and hires, it's $2,500, and then for other positions, it's $2,000. And then we want to increase the wages for our seasonal temp staff, and most of those folks are on the scrap program, seasonal container delivery. And full-time equivalent, I'm asking for one CDO, Equipment Operator, to backfill the Training Coordinator position. And then, of course, I did mention to you going into the end of this year, we have four vacancies that we're only going to fill one during the slow season and then wait till next year to fill those, well, recruit, fill those spots and start training to get people geared up for the season. Going into health insurance, I want to thank Hazel Dunsby, she's online, and Paul Ford, and we worked with our brokers to negotiate a lower premium increase, and we were initially looking at just over 12%. We were able to negotiate to 9.65%. In doing so, we did have to raise those deductibles for the traditional single and family programs that we offer, from 500 for a single to 750, and then 1,500 for family. With the insurance premium split, we're continuing with the 80/20, and we're also continuing with 100% paid by the district on the high deductibles. We, I anticipate that we'll be having more employees signing over to that high deductible plan. It is a nice benefit with the health savings account that is offered as well. Moving into the Tier One for employees, this is the Utah Retirement System Plan, and we have the just under 18% contribution for Tier One, and for Tier Two, it's just over 16%. That's contributed by the district. And then moving into the operational highlights, I've mentioned some of the increased costs we have, but before we get to that, the QR code for the landfill vouchers has taken off, and we'll be working out any kind of hiccups that have come along the way. And then, we've talked about Townsville City as the test case for a city to have their actual own code to use for code enforcement for residents to haul their own loads for the landfill. And going into risk management, loss prevention, Shane Norris is at the back of the room here, and I always want to give a shout out to him, understanding we want to keep along with our trainings, beef up IT security, emergency preparedness. One of the things I want to tout to you tonight is that I did receive a call from our workers' comp, excuse me, with Ryan Hatch from the trust. He did let me know that our workers' comp E-MOD score has decreased, which is a good thing. It's, we were at a 2.37, which is actually really not good, and we've come down to a 1.92, and I think that that will continue to come down. It's a 19% decrease, and I really contribute that to all the focus of safety and paying attention to what's going on out there and helping support our team. So anyway, that's good news. Right now, as the first initial quotes for insurance going forward, we actually will see a reduction in workers' comp of just over 5,000 in that premium, but we saw an increase in liability just to past history. So it's actually a wash, will be even, but that's better than an increase, so we'll take it. Looking at the fees for processing garbage, we are, we've been told that the each facility in the district that where we deliver waste, Salt Lake County facilities, Trans Jordan facilities, are all going to go up $2 per ton. So we budgeted an extra 255 pay in there for garbage processing for a total of 4.5 million. Looking at the increased costs for recycling, we still want to divert the waste away from the landfill. We hope to increase subscribers for glass and green going forward, and then we're managing those increased costs for processing recycling. Right now, we have budgeted 1.4 million, which is about $72 per ton. Paul may talk that through, and he may have more information as we get into those dollars and cents. But we work hard to keep that recycling clean and educate our residents, and we have seen improved rates of clean recycling, which is great, helps to keep those fees low. Okay, next page, appreciate that, Renee. And then Paul, if you do it, there's no question for me, but the narrative, we'll turn it over to Paul.
Yes, and this is, good evening, everyone. This is what we looked at last meeting, too, but just to quickly review, the first column, actual 2022, those are audited numbers that were finalized, and so revenue expense was minus 158,000 approximately. The next column is our adopted budget for 2023. The third column is estimated current year for 2023. This was my best estimate really back in August, so it can probably change from then to now and even to the end of the year, but best estimate for 2023. And then the tentative budget for 2024. And just a couple of things I wanted to point out, we've talked about a lot of this before, but just a couple of items. Personnel is one area Pam mentioned, it's increased, and you know, we continue to see increases there. We appreciate that, and feel like it's really needed for us to retain and attract employees that we need to provide the services. And so that's one area. Just looking at it though, that is 40% of our, you know, a little over 40% of our total expenses is just in personnel, which includes wages, overtime, benefits, pension, those type of things. So that's really, you know, our largest cost there. Going down through, I'm looking at a couple of other categories. Fuel, we budgeted that approximately 14% higher than this year. We got, looking at a couple of things and where we're at this year, I think we were, I can't just remember, but I think about around 10% so far this year. And we looked, and CNG's been increasing, and so we budgeted that about 14% increase. Maintenance was about 8%. And then Pam mentioned the disposal fees. Each one of those is going up $2 a ton at the landfill, at the transfer station, and we anticipate Trans Jordan, too, so that's an increase. So I kind of sound like a broken record, but things are increasing. I reported, I don't control what's happening. But as far as recycling fees go, we went back and forth on this and talked about it. We did get notice from one of our vendors that their fee's going to increase their base fee some, and so we had that at $65 originally, and then we bumped it up to 72, which I think is probably going to be a little bit conservative. But it's interesting, when we look at that in total, this year, we're projecting 25,000-26 million estimating for this year, which is going to get fairly close to the budget, you know. I think we are going to be close to that budgeted expenditures amount. But next year, we're going to be up over $3 million just for the budget due to those different categories. And so it's kind of the world we live in, I think you all felt it personally, but it really kind of jumps out at you when you look at it, it's gone from 25 million to 28 million. All right, a couple of things, see, we can see down, and we'll go over the capital expenditures, when we did move some of those and transfer some of those from 2023 to 2024. So are there any questions on this? We do, I do round the adopted budgets to the nearest hundred, which is something to deal with, but really, no changes been here from what we talked about in the past, at least at the last meeting. Okay? As far as capital expenditures go, we talked about this before, but just to recap, we have four sideload trucks that we would like to order for next year. Those are new trucks that we are going to order, and then three light duty trucks, one hook lift truck, and those are used for scrap, and then one cat over truck, and those are can take, for the container crew, delivery, repair. They're out and drive those every day. That's what they take the cans out in and go to the customers' homes and use those. So those trucks, and then also a carryover from 2023, eight sideload trucks, and then two sideload trucks, the truck bodies we're planning on. And so a total budget of 6 million for 2024, that's a fairly significant number, but we talked about, and to show in the past, we have not gotten trucks the last couple of years, so it's built up a little there. But right now, we're hopeful that we get, you know, those 10 trucks in April, and then we can order four additional, too, after this meeting. Okay. This is, this is the expenses by type, and we mentioned, I mentioned this previously, our personnel is really about 40, 41% of where we spend our money or where our dollars go. Maintenance is significant, and then disposal fees for refugees, you have Trans Jordan and also the Salt Lake County, that's really the second highest category. So we can see there, our refugees fees, maintenance personnel, and then vendor recycling fees, which are the big ones where a lot of our money goes. And then we can see depreciation. Depreciation is just, it's a write-down or deduction, reduction of that asset over time. And so with depreciation expense, cash does not go out that year. Cash goes out upfront and you buy it, and then that's kind of an accounting methodology in terms of you take that expense over a period of time, and hopefully, we're getting benefit from the truck. So depreciation expense is a pretty good sized number, but really, a bit more important than that is what trucks are we getting in, and when does that cash go out upfront, because we really need to be aware of that. This is more of a record-keeping accounting transactions or depreciation. Any questions on expenses? Keep moving on here. And then the next slide, tentative cash projections. Everything kind of in the newish, the first three columns, those are actual numbers from our audited financial statements. And so for the year's ending, the third line from the bottom is really what I like to focus on here, is our ending cash and investment balances, and that's all our cash accounts and our investment accounts there on that third line from the bottom. And so last year, at the end of 2022, we had 9.8 million at the end of the year. And we, and this is really, it just rolls forward from year to year, the beginning cash balance is, excuse me, carried forward from the prior year with any balance in the prior year. And then we add in any proceeds we get from truck or asset sales. We add in revenues, and then we minus out expenses that are adjusted for depreciation, and then minus out capital expenditures. And so that gets us, you know, just a projection and a roll forward. We like to do this, you know, Pam and I talk about this type of thing quite a bit, just how much cash do we have, when are we going to need it, where are we at as far as the fee increase goes, let's make sure we're providing time for those type of things. We don't want to surprise anyone, and we don't want to be surprised, you know? And that's part of the reason we go over this and keep on bringing it up. But this year, I think at the end of 2023, this was based on the numbers back, you know, when I said this, end of August, September, about 10 and a half million, I think, is about where we'll be. And that was adjusted for, that's higher, significantly higher than some of the numbers we saw in previous versions of this, but the main contributor to that was that we are not purchasing the trucks and getting the trucks that we anticipated. And then next year, you can see there in 2024, if we get all of the capital expenditures, that's going to be $6 million outflow for capital expenditures and projecting about 5.3 million balance at the end of 2024. So the second line from the bottom is just the cash balance over the operational expenses, just getting a ratio there so we can estimate where we're at. And so for the end of 2023, 10.5 million, that's 41% of the operational expenses, just a way to look at it and measure it another way. And then down below that bottom line is just the net liability that's provided by the actuaries, and just keep that there, because that is a commitment we have in place. I really don't think you have to pay that out at once, you know, if we did away with the program or stopped it, but it's just a liability that comes from the actuaries that we need to be aware of and recognizing, and keep that in mind. So, any questions on this? Yeah?
How does one do projections these days about future years? I mean, would, you know, do you assume a continuation of the rates we're paying today, and no decline? Do you build in an increase over what we're paying today?
Well, we did, I did, for the year that just happened, I, you know, inflation has come down. I mean, sometimes it doesn't feel like it, but the actual rate now is 3 something, you know, and it varies. And so what I did was for 2024, that's the budget, and it's line item by line item, and that's the one I'm talking about, where it's $3 million higher than what we're looking at this year. And so that's, that's a pretty solid increase, you know, 3 million there. But going forward after that, I went back to 3% increase generally for expenses, which I thought-
3% increase over today's?
Yeah, over the 2024 numbers. So for like 2025, I took 2024 expenses, most categories, sometimes have specific numbers now, but if, excuse me, general category, I'll increase that 3% for 2025, and then again for 2026 and 2027. Is that right? I don't know. I sure hope so. You can, I don't think any of us want, you know, things to continue as far as inflation and Costco, but I always tell people I reserve the right to change it, and I love the word estimate and projection. You know, the actual, I feel good about those, they're audited, those are good numbers, but when you get out into the future, it's a bit of a dark draw. You know, and here, I think we have those vendor recycling costs, which are based on the commodity markets, which really fluctuates significantly. And then we have personnel, but another big factor is fuel, you know, and that's a commodity, both CNG and oil, those type of things, and then you get into maintenance and some of those parts. So that's, you know, my best estimate. Is it going to be right? No. Is it close? I hope so, but that's, you know, you do the best you can with the information you have at the time, and then I think you always reserve the right to get smarter as time passes. With more information. And more information, you know, you need to be able to adjust, so.
I hope we get surprised by better than your predicted numbers.
Well, you had to be surprised on their dividends.
Yes, yes.
Because we were, we were the interests that you had on your-
Yeah, that was, that's one plus.
That saved us on a few things.
That's one plus, because it's about, it's 5.3, 5.4.
Right.
So you're taking that times 10 million, you know, and that's 500,000, whereas, like you said, it was a tenth of 1% before, and so that's a fairly significant number. But for us, it doesn't get close to covering all the increased costs, it definitely helps you depreciate it.
And then the next piece is the fee schedule, reviewing, this is just a page to summarize what we've done and I mentioned for 2024. I talked about the residential fee increase for the Town of Brighton and Big Cotton Canyon, $2 per home per month for each of those seasonal and full-time residents. So full-time residents will move from $16 to $18 per home per month, and then the seasonal move from $9.75 to $11.75. And moving in, as I mentioned, the front load container collection services. We did an evaluation and analysis of that, those services, and we needed to raise those rates going into 2024. The reason why recycling is 18%, garbage is 10, is that recycling, we have those, you know, increased costs for processing, and we need to recruit that cost. So that, I anticipate raising that again in 2025 for recycling, and we evaluate for garbage as well. And then the other special services, sorry. I mentioned previously that we service many of the municipalities with the city halls, libraries, et cetera. We did update our agreement with Salt Lake County for servicing their libraries, health departments, the DA's office in their facilities, including the government center on 21st. And so each of those divisions did receive an increase. For going into 2025, I will be briefing you early on in the year, we will need to increase their rates going into 2025. They'll need to kind of, they'll need to know about what that will be before we get, they get into their budget season, and then also noting that the contract we have with them expires at the end of 2024. So we'll start those discussions early with them. Any questions on that? We can scroll through the actual fee schedule, and anything that is increasing is highlighted in red font. And then, of course, if you choose to adopt tonight, we do have the fee schedule that is red font as we move. So if you'll scroll down slightly there, and we'll go through the, those are the fee increases for the front load services, 10% garbage is coming forward, recycling 18%. Moving into the automated can, sideload services, made some adjustments there. The method there is that if a facility, like say, the city hall has four recycling cans, we have an economy to scale there. So we have that base charge for the initial can, and then if there's multiple cans, we might have a slightly lower cost because we're there, but we do need to cover the cost and the processing. And then seasonal events- And moving in, as I mentioned, the front load container collection services. We did an evaluation and analysis of that, those services. And we needed to raise those rates going into 2024. The, the reason why recycling is 18% and garbage is 10 is that recycling, we have those, you know, increased costs for processing and we need to recoup that cost. So that, I anticipate raising that again in 2025 for recycling. We'll evaluate for garbage as well. And then the other special services, sorry. I mentioned previously that we service many of the municipalities with the city halls, libraries, et cetera. We did update our agreement with Salt Lake County for servicing their libraries, health departments. The DA is often in our facility, including the government center on 21st. And so each of those divisions did receive an increase. For going into 2025, I will be briefing you early on in the year. We will need to increase the rates going into 2025. They'll need to kind of, they'll need to know about what that will be before we get, they get into their budget season. And then also noting that the contract that we have with them expires at the end of 2024. So we'll start those discussions early with them. No questions on that? We can scroll through the actual fee schedule and anything that is increasing is highlighted in red font. And then of course, if you choose to adopt tonight, we do have the fee schedule that, this red font is removed. So he'll scroll down slightly there and we'll go through the, those are the fee increases for the front load services, 10% garbage is coming forward, recycling 18%. Moving into the automated can, side load services, made some adjustments there. The method there is that if a facility, like say, the city hall has four recycling cans, we have an economy to scale there. So we have that base charge for the initial can. And then if there's multiple cans, we might have a slightly lower cost because we're there. But we do need to cover the cost and the processing. And then seasonal events for delivery dumpsters or, or cans. I raised the delivery fees for that. I should scroll down a little bit more. And then we're asking for the container, the roll-off container for municipal events. We've added in any additional cost that the district may pay in the past. We're asking to pass that on to each municipality, covering the charges for mattresses, refrigerators, tires, et cetera. And then the $125 will cover up to one ton. And then anything over a ton, we will charge whatever that new fee will be at the landfill or transfer station. And I apologize, that $28 should be $29. I just caught that at the bottom, the one ton. Since the landfill, the Salt Lake Valley landfill is moving from $27 to $29. So that's minimum would be a 29 and the maximum would be 41 at transport. Good batch.
Can we look at the automated cans category?
And is it the?
So there's a decrease on that category.
Yeah, that is taken into account economies of scale. So it's the charge, a higher cost for that initial can. And then since we're at that facility, you charge a little lower for the second, third, fourth can. Covering that they have.
So that's potentially coming down in 2024?
Correct. And then we're discontinuing, if you would scroll down a little bit more. As I mentioned before, we had two different fee schedules for special services or the front load. So we're discontinuing one and just sticking with the, the one that will be part of the 2024 budget with that correction on the fee.
Right, is that it?
That's it. Let's see, I'll have questions.
All right, well, that's, so that, that's, that's our tentatively adopted 2024 budget and fee schedule. Actually, I'd like to thank Pam and Paul and the whole staff for bringing this together. This is actually the core function of this board, really. I mean, our financial stewardship is the biggest piece of what we do. And there has been a lot of work going into this. And I know that each of the board members, we've each studied this and of course, we were tentatively adopted. But just thank you Pam for, for all of this great work. And so any other questions from board members to Pam and Paul about, about the tentative budget and fee schedule? Okay. We'll now move on to item four, which is, is an important piece of this meeting. And the reason really we're holding it in the evening is the public hearing to allow comments on the 2024 tentative budget and fee increases. Do we have any members of the public here or online who would like to address the board?
I think you have to open the meeting correct. Yes. I would say we open the public hearing portion to allow comments on the 2024 tentative budget and fee increases.
Yeah, thank you Lori. We have, we have a motion to open.
I'll second.
Here, we have a second from Board Member Barney. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And, and any opposed? Okay. We'll now open, open the public hearing. Any, anyone wanting to address the board on this topic? Okay. All right, do we, do we need to have a motion to close the public hearing? All right, well, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. All right. Board Member Shelton, any second?
Lori.
Lori's turning on second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the, the public hearing is closed. And then move on to item five, which is at the board's option, we may adopt Resolution 4422 to the day, which is the 2024 budget and fee schedule. We actually have two options we could, we could adopt it tonight. We do have a regularly scheduled meeting for Christmas Day. At 9:00 AM, Christmas morning. So that might be fun. So to me, what, what's the, what's the sense of the board? Do you want to move forward and, and vote on that tonight?
I, I would like to make sure we approve that for number 4422. A resolution of the board of trustees of the Wasatch County Recycling District approving and adopting the 2024 district budget and fee schedule and approving, adopting certain fee adjustments along with the visitor able to attach with the fee.
All right.
I'll second.
Do we have to make the correction that typo?
Yeah, thank you.
As well as noted in this meeting.
All right, we, we, we have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Board Member string, we have a second from Board Member Barney. Do you need a voice vote on this? Okay, me, not if, no roll call. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay. That Resolution 4422 is adopted. And so congratulations Pam and, and staff. Okay, item, Pam, here's the.
Thank you so much.
All right, we have item 5.2, the option to reschedule or cancel the date for the next board meeting scheduled for Monday, December 25th at 9:00 AM. All entertain a motion on that.
Maybe cancel.
I have a motion to cancel and a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that, that is, that is canceled. Item 5.3, we'll, this is, this is something to do with annually. It's a, it's a resolution approving Pam Roberts to serve as a board member on the Utah Local Government Trust Board of Directors and to receive compensation being directed to the district. Pam and Rachel, any other comments on this?
Appreciate you allowing me to serve. I learned a lot and appreciate being on that legislative body.
Yeah, and I, I, I think it's, I think it's great to have your role in that as well as the background you get. And so, and it doesn't, it doesn't affect you personally. You're not, you're, you're not personally getting money because you're redirecting, redirecting the stipend you get to the district. So, all right, any other questions or comments about that from members of the board?
Yep, I can make a motion to that.
Oh, second now?
All right, we have a motion from Board Member Orin and a second from Board Member Barbieri. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, that is, that is adopted. Item 5.4, we have a resolution, or we have a proposed interlocal agreement with the town of Alta for recycling container collections. Pam, any, any comments about this?
Just to note that this is a new agreement. The town, I noticed the town early on, by clause in the contract, I need to let them know well in advance if we're going to need to increase their costs or their fees over 3% because 3% escalation is in the agreement. We needed to increase them to 12.62 because of recycling, increased fees and so forth. So the town, I worked with Rachel and has bested up a new agreement with that increase. And the town agrees. They are in the process of still, ironing out how many containers during the winter. They're working with a ski resort and the ski resort would like more. So if we could, wanted to explain the.
Yeah, so we, we would like the approval of the agreement, but pending, Pam, we need to negotiate some of those terms regarding ton of cans. They won't. But the, the fee increase that we, has already been approved by them in theory. So looking for an approval pending final negotiations on the term regarding number of cans and the dollar amount will change.
Yeah, and those are really non-substantive negotiations. I mean, the substantive agreement set, the fees already, the fee schedule already set. It's just, are we going to have X number of cans or?
You got it. Or need to negotiate final non-substantive changes.
Okay, any questions from the board on this proposed interlocal? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Okay. Board Member Shelton, so moves.
I'll second that.
Who seconded? Board Member Hales. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is approved. Pam, General Manager, to report item 5.5.
Okay, as I mentioned, we're in the middle of leaf bag and that picture on the front is obviously early in the season. I did receive pictures that were, yes ma'am.
I can just say that I did read an article yesterday that was just floating around about we discouraging people from recycling, just having them stay in their yard. So it, it enriches their soil and their lives.
Yes.
Do they stay in their yard? I was just laughing when I saw that. I was like, that's funny, I respect this, that's funny. Anyway, I take that, go ahead.
Well, and, and speaking to that, leaves have a, a high volume of nitrogen. And we used to take them to the compost facility at the landfill, but we had to de-bag those. And so then we, Salt Lake kind of wanted to take that over after we separated of the de-bagging and we would be charged substantially, I think it was at that time in 2013, it was going to be almost $50 a ton to have them de-bag. So it was at that time, the board said, let's have them go into the landfill. They do generate methane in the landfill, so that's what we're doing with them. And so the, the benefit, the purpose of them, I really think, helps the watering, right? And hopefully reduces the flooding. I think it's still got a great purpose and fits in our, our failed service package.
All right, so if you'll scroll down, I, I just wanted to let you know that we do have visitors from time to time that come and want to see the trucks and see how things operate around here. So we have Lito and his mom that came from Taylorsville and Zane and his parents from Harriman. And I, I hear from Justin Tuck, who's our new manager. He's received calls from schools and more students want to come. So we're going to try to make sure we don't get big groups and get them here when they're, we're not busy in the yard and can take them out there showing the C and G island, how the trucks operate. It was, it was a lot of fun.
That's fun.
Yeah, it was fun for staff, just as it was for the kids. Okay, and then moving on to the next one. And I know that this question popped up and I did reach out to each of you so that no one was blindsided that this was going to be in my report and part of the request. We do have four side load trucks that we can order next year. And they'll, they're on the replacement schedule. And what I'm proposing and asking for your direction is to go ahead and make those diesel trucks. And here's the why. We've talked about how a mixed fleet can be beneficial. Diesel gas is easier to get in an emergency versus C and G might take it a little longer. So with those four trucks, we can also save on the purchase price of just over 23,000 per truck. So the total savings going into 2024 is just over 92,000 for those four. And looking at the price difference, and I think Andy Keen, our asset manager, for putting this information together for me. And this is projections going into 2024 with the price escalation that we anticipate from our vendors. And then also looking at the price per gallon of fuel. We do know that diesel is right now a little higher. The 2024 projected price is what Salt Lake County Fleet, that's where we buy our fuel, has projected us paying for diesel would be 3.93, C and G 2.35. So it's an anticipated $1.58 more per, for a gallon of diesel versus C and G equivalent. But one of the things that really jumped off the page here, we were able to get actual data on MPG. Paul presented previously about what we saw as a district way back when we did have diesel trucks. We got just over two miles per gallon on those. And, and C and G was about 1.5 at the time or 1.7 now. And so Draper City gave us live information that they, they run a full diesel fleet. And they got, they are getting 3.1 miles per gallon. And that's even higher than what we experienced previously. So the technologies are improving. C and G will be 1.7. So it's about a mile and a half per gallon more with diesel. So when we make that up on the fuel, could be. Then the question comes in at air quality, right, emissions. It's really hard to get actual emissions, although I have to say that just this morning, I talked to Todd Butler, who's the General Manager of the Cash Valley Transit District. I was talking to him about a different topic, trying to see what kind of grant funding might be out there for a C and G cover. And it led into diesel versus natural gas. They run all diesel buses up in Logan. And he said that they explored C and G and they work with Utah State University to do emissions testing. He sent to me the information and I apologize that I haven't been able to see it. What he told me is that they're running clean diesel, which is basically what we would run with the DEF. And it's, it's very comparable to the C and G. So I want to look at that data. But I think the, the most appealing part of having four diesel trucks is we can collect our own data and we'll know. Andy let me know that he can test emissions. He can, we can, we'll monitor the miles per gallon, how much is it going to cost us? And then looking at the resale value from Salt Lake City and what we understand from Draper, diesel does fetch a higher dollar on resale. We have talked about that before. I think that's been a number. So I'm making the leap and asking for your support to go ahead and make those four a diesel order. Diesel truck orders, right?
So I, I would say, I brought this up last board meeting and I really appreciate you bringing this information back because I think in the past, when it was first implemented, it was because, you know, diesel had a bad rap with part of air quality and things like that. I think primarily it was air quality argument. And there's been so many changes with regulations on diesel and things like that that I think that, I think that we're, those have been really minimized to where the point they might commute. And then I also believe that it's a really good idea to have some diversity in our fleet. You know, we did put a lot of money into the, to the expanding our, our fill-up. Yeah, fuel stations, anyway, which is great. But in on a resale situation, most smaller communities or smaller haulers that are buying these trucks, they don't have access to C and G stations. And so forever, you're going to have that same issue for resale value. So, and to me, it just makes sense to have some diversity in it and to put some money into that. And just like you said, test it, especially if, if we can compensate some of the difference between the price of diesel and C and G with the miles per gallon. That's, that's a big deal too. We drive a lot of miles.
Yes, you do. A million every year.
We'll be able to look at that and do a calculation. Actual, are we going to have additional cost in the miles per gallon?
I also don't really understand what, I, I think, I hope you continue to do this too, but what is the difference in our maintenance as far as our parts cheaper to get if it's diesel? Are they cheaper to get if it's C and G? You know, are they more readily available if it's diesel or if it's C and G? Those kind of questions we need to kind of look at too because that drives the cost of maintenance. If it's hard for hard to come by, then it's, then they get more expensive. So because maintenance obviously is a huge chunk for our budget, so anyway.
Those are good questions. And initially, we can say from the experience we hear from Draper and Salt Lake City, their, their maintenance costs are roughly the same. The parts, the trucks themselves are still challenging to get. So, but experiencing for ourselves and it'll be a different cost.
Resale?
It is higher for diesel trucks.
Well, we ran into that when we were trying to offload the last few years ago. It was like they were way, way lower than we had anticipated or budgeted, so.
Pam, you're looking for direction to, to approve that initiative to, to purchase the diesel.
Yes.
Any other comments on that?
I actually have some questions. You do have environmental information here that we haven't talked on. How much do you know about these individual things? I must say, I don't know a whole lot and haven't had time to investigate since we had our conversation. But there are big differences on nitrogen oxide, on particular, particulate matter, on GHG. What do these things mean? Do you, do you know?
Yeah, the GHG is greenhouse gases. Particulate matter is more like the carbon. And then nitrogen oxide is the, another- oxide is the, another emitting from our vehicles, if you would. And you can see that the nitrogen oxide is higher with diesel. But the thing that's not on here for natural gas is the data that's from well to wheel. And with you, if you add that in, then the science show, or the, I should say, the information search will show you that the emissions from the well to wheel on C and G is just as high on that oxide, nitrogen oxide, as it is on diesel.
What are the environmental impacts of nitrogen oxides? I honestly don't know.
Yeah, from what I understand, it is one of the most poisonous to breathe. And so I think that it's hard because like I said, depending on where you look and depending on the data you look at, you're going to see equivalents on both sides. This information that I have in this presentation is specifically from the Department of Energy calculations that they have online. And so I plugged in four garbage trucks and did a comparison. And this is what their emission information shows. But I plugged in our type of garbage trucks with a Peterbilt chassis, that that's where the engine is and that's where the emissions are going to be with the C and G or diesel, isn't in there. It's not an option to choose. So I had to choose a truck that's not really like ours. I wish I had straight emissions tests from Salt Lake City, from Draper, but that's not something that they really measure, I guess, or have on hand. And that's why I really want to do this and see what we can.
Well, I think it's important to note that there's a key component left out of that too. The, from well to well, right?
Yes.
It's like, that's a big key component that if you drop that out of the data, then it will make your data look like you want your data to look. So it makes, oh, this looks wonderful. But you're missing a huge chunk of the true impact that it has.
And I was shocked when I saw and heard that from Emily Puskas, who works for Salt Lake County and the mayor's office that we initially talked to. And she's the one that helped us with that electric truck pilot. And so she ran some numbers and also looked at everything, will do well, everything. So anyway, it's mixed.
Would it be your intent then to partner with someplace like Utah State University and actually have readers on those? That's what we can measure that on a reader basis? Run a study?
Good question. So what I understand is we can put our own on.
I can do that.
And I think it was Emily that talked about helping us gather that information. It's been a little while since we talked about all this. It was back in March and April lately. So at any rate, we will make sure, we're going to have plenty of time, fortunately, right?
I get shocked. I was wondering, because I know right now we have a special arrangement where we're putting monitors, Salt Lake County's helping put monitors on UTA buses.
Yes.
Measure air, air quality in, all over. We can actually, G I F, where they're at, to figure that out. I think what would be interesting is to be able to do something similar with this where we can watch how many hours it's running, is there certain hours in heat times during the day where those indicators are higher or lower. Some of that will play into it. It'd be interesting to have that information. I gotta believe that there's one of the universities that would love to have that.
Oh, yeah. I think so. Yeah, thank you. Great idea. Absolutely.
I guess, I guess the question for the board, are there any concerns with Pam moving forward with, with these purchases that she's describing? All right, is that sufficient direction for you? It doesn't sound like there's, I don't, I don't think the board is opposed to the asking. Is that a good enough direction for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Anything else, Pam?
I think that was it.
Okay.
Just some administrative priorities, but we can get into those in January because we've already kicked off meetings and teams and start talking about what we're doing and why and who's going to lead the charge on each of those categories.
That item is what we'll call the SDP. Someone else is twelve.
Hey, hey, hey.
All right, so item five point six, board nominations for the 2024 board vice chair. So traditionally, we have had a chair and a vice chair. And by tradition, in fact, long tradition, the vice chair becomes the chair during the, during the next year. And so the formal transfer of that would occur is actually in the January meeting when the board's chair succession occurs, the vice chair is formally appointed. But typically in, in the last meeting of the year, we entertain board nominations for vice chair. It's a, so it's a, it's a commitment of at least a couple of years, at least a two-year commitment. And I actually would, so, so we're going to open this up for nominations, but I'd actually like to nominate Greg Shelton from White City to serve as vice chair next year. I've spoken with Greg and I think he's amenable to it. But I'd like to open it up if there are any other nominations and, or any, anyone who'd like to express an interest in doing that either now or in the future.
I think the second got nominated.
Laurie has a cool game.
We'd kind of like to, somebody who's willing to jump into the light about in two years in a row if you don't want to stand in the way. But any other, any other suggestions or nominations for vice chair for 2024?
My feelings won't be hurt, I promise.
Okay.
We're excited.
Okay, I, do we need, we don't need to vote on this nomination, do we, or do we?
Um, it doesn't really matter. We can do it now or we can do it.
Why don't we do it now as long as we agree with that?
Let's do it.
Okay, yes.
Well, I still have to win my election.
That's the question.
Okay.
Oh, that's true.
If you do, then unfortunately.
Then you have to make a new election.
Should we wait until January then?
No, we can do it next year.
And then just be appointed in your presidency. You can do it tonight.
Okay, all right. So I've made, I've made the motion. Do we have a second? Actually, we already have a second.
And actually, I'll make a friendly amendment that we should leave appointing. They're elected to that position in his election.
Okay, yes, I'll, I'll accept that, that amendment. So we have, we have a nomination and opposed to, like, Greg as the vice chair in 2024. So any discussion about the motion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I made a friendly amendment.
All right, no, no opposition. Great, congratulations. So.
Yeah.
All right.
So win your election.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Okay, we have item five point seven. Anna, what's your item?
All right. Well, this is also the time of the year that we get to thank Dan for being our chairman and being here and sharing these meetings. And he's done such a great job and I appreciate his working with him. Greg, we always have a pre-meeting a week before and Dan has always checked out with town.
You're telling Greg this now?
By the way.
That's every rule.
He may just throw the hat in or throw in the towel. But no, I don't want to run for office.
I want to back down from office now again.
So with that, we want to, I want to read this resolution on behalf of Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling District and Board of Trustees. We want to express appreciation to board member Dan Givens, whereas the Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling District, formerly known as the Salt Lake County Special Service District Number One, was established in January nineteen seventy-seven by the Salt Lake County Commissioners and renamed the Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling District effective of January first, twenty thirteen. And whereas on November tenth, two thousand nine, the Salt Lake County Council created the Administrative Control Board to govern the district effective January first, twenty ten. And whereas on March sixteen, twenty twenty-two, the county council reorganized the district as a local district and the Board of Trustees was granted full governing authority as allowed under state statutes. And whereas Daniel Givens was appointed to the board by the Holiday City Council in January twenty twenty. And whereas the honorable board members served their respective constituents faithfully and diligently. And whereas the board has been effective in governing the district and the waste and recycling collection services for its eighty-six thousand households. And whereas this honorable board member has retired from the board in great standing. And whereas the district wishes to express appreciation to this board member for their years of dedicated service. And now therefore, be it resolved by the board that this member is appreciated and recognized. We applaud, we applaud all the efforts of the board members, Dan Givens and the staff, approved and adopted this day, the thirteenth day of November twenty twenty-three. So Dan, thank you very much. We're glad you're here. You don't, you didn't run for reelection?
No.
Oh, this is pretty sad. He said he was applauding you for being the chair.
He said he was going to turn it over to the young folks.
Oh.
Which makes us very old. So Dan, I'm down.
I have my wife, you know.
Yeah.
This is my big moment.
Yeah.
Actually, Anna, you stand for two.
Yeah.
I never did. I was, I never was the last president in school.
You can be, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, we didn't actually.
Oh, yes.
So moved by Greg.
Yes.
Shelton and backed by Laurie. I'm, I need to come a little more formal, I guess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes. Dan, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. We'll miss you.
We'll miss you too. So, so I have one more, one more resolution. Similarly, Scott Bracken has, is no longer serving. He's, he's not being reelected and he has served for a long time. I think he's been in Chinnor twice.
He's been here a lot.
Yeah.
He's been here a long, long time. And I, quite personally, actually, maybe we shouldn't, we shouldn't be lauding him. He's on a cruise somewhere. He's in the place of palm trees. But Scott's been a great friend. He's, he's a very good friend for many, many years to me. I served as the justice court judge for High Twelve. He was on the council. And, and so I've known him a long, long time. So, so we have resolution number forty-four twenty-five. Be it known and remembered that whereas the Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling District, formerly known as Salt Lake City County Special Service District Number One, was established in January nineteen seventy-seven, the Salt Lake County Commissioners and renamed the Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling District effective as of January first, twenty thirteen. Whereas on November tenth, two thousand nine, Salt Lake County Council created the Administrative Control Board to govern the district effective January first, twenty ten. Whereas on March sixteen, twenty twenty-two, the county council reorganized the district as a local district and the Board of Trustees was granted full governing authority as allowed under state statutes. And whereas Scott Bracken was appointed to the board by the Cotton High City Council in January two thousand twelve. And whereas this honorable board member has served their respective constituents faithfully and diligently and the board has been effective in governing the district and the waste and recycling collection services for its eighty-six thousand households. Whereas this honorable board member has retired from the board. And whereas the district wishes to express appreciation to this board member for their years of dedicated service. Now therefore, be it resolved by the board and this member is appreciated and recognized. We applaud all the efforts of board member, members and staff, approved and adopted this thirteenth day of November twenty twenty-three. So any, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that's, that's approved as well. So now, a final item on the agenda, our business item is, Katerina, are you still with us?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. So Katerina, why don't you take us through the proposed board meeting calendar for 2024?
Thank you. I proudly present the 2024 Board of Trustees Meeting Calendar. As you can see, the meetings are set for the fourth Monday of each month at nine AM, with the exception of May, when Memorial Day falls on the fourth Monday, and the meeting is set for the third Monday, May twentieth. Once adopted, I'll send a meeting series for January through October, an update for the May meeting, a separate meeting for November's public hearing, and December, should the board choose to meet.
Okay, any, any, any discussions or questions, comments about the schedule?
Do we adopt?
All right, board member Barney moves, do we adopt?
I'll second that.
Second.
Second. Second board, board member Hales. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that, that schedule, the calendar is adopted. Do we have any need of a closed session? All right, there's no need for a closed session.
I think that's one thing I would like to actually suggest.
Yes.
I think that you and board member Bracken need to come to the January meeting so we can prevent his and then we'll have a party.
That sounds good.
Yeah, yes, party. Okay, there's a party in there.
Yeah.
I might show up.
Okay, any, any, any other business that board members want to bring up? I'll bring something up. I, I just want to say thank you for the chance to serve among you. I first ran for public office in nineteen ninety-nine. I was elected to the original Holiday City Council. And in the interim, I served for ten years as a judge. And this is my second stint on the council in the same seat. And so for twenty-four years, I've had the chance of being in public service and now it's time to step aside. Interestingly, my decision about a year ago not to run, this year has coincided with a bout with cancer. And had surgery on November first. It was successful. I still have sutures that I'm getting out tomorrow from my oncological surgeon, but the lab results have come back negative. And so I just feel like this is a great milestone in my life to go forward with many, many other things I want to do. But it has been such a privilege to be in public service for a quarter of a century. So anyway, thanks to all of you. Okay, item eight. We are not meeting in December, so in January, we'll have the general manager's report. And the meeting will be held on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. At that time, we'll have a 2023 year-end financial report, general manager's report, and then the formal board chair succession and vice chair formal appointment. So, all right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.